June 17th, I'd like to call the City of Tallahassee City Commission meeting to order. To provide the invocation today, we have Commissioner Elaine Bryant. Commissioner Bryant, following your invocation, I'd like to call on the Mayor Pro Tem for a special moment of silence. And Mayor Pro Tem, if you wouldn't mind then just taking us straight into the Pledge of Allegiance, I would appreciate it. So Commissioner Bryant, thank you for providing the invocation. Floor is yours.
Let us pray. Call to God how thankful we are today to come together again to do the business in this city. We pray, oh God, that you will direct our thoughts and our minds. Keep us mindful for why we come together to summon this president in the City of Tallahassee, Florida. We pray now that you would order our minds and our spirits in your divine purpose for which we have gathered. We pray for many, Lord, who are steep among us. We pray for those who have been impacted by COVID-19. We pray for those, Lord, who have been impacted by injustices across this United States of America. We pray now that you would be with us, direct our path, and we will be searching to give you glory in Jesus' name.
Amen. Mayor Pro Tem, would you mind leading us in a moment of silence, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. There were five years ago today, nine members of the Emmanuel AME Church in Charleston, South Carolina, were in Bible study, and they lost their lives due to hate. They were the Honorable Reverend Clementa Pinkney, Cynthia Graham Hurd, Susie Jackson, Ethel Lance, Reverend DePain Middleton Doctor, Taiwanza Sanders, Reverend Daniel Simmons, Reverend Sharonda Singleton, and Myra Thompson. I ask now if we could just pause for a few moments in remembrance. Thank you. If we may go into the Pledge of Allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
I appreciate it. Before we begin, let me remind you, we do have a public hearing that starts at 5:00. So if we take care of the business before the City Commission, prior to, we will come back at 5:00 for the public hearing. Good afternoon, Mr. City Manager. Do we have any agenda modifications, sir?
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. Materials have been added to your item 1105. That item is a discussion of police citizens review board. We've also added two items to your agenda, items 1106 and items 1107, both involving our Star Metro Department. Those are all of the modifications.
Excellent. Colleagues, any questions for the City Manager on modifications?
None.
Seeing none, moving on. Mr. Manager, do we have any presentations today?
No, sir, we do not.
Excellent. Do we have any announcements today?
No announcements.
Excellent. Usually we have citizen input on agenda items. Mr. Cook, I'm sure you will walk us through each item, but do you want to have any opening comments during this time?
I will walk you through the items, but I will just go ahead since you acknowledged me and let you know that on consent, which I believe is coming up shortly on your agenda, we did receive one comment on item 7.05, which is the FSU Solar Energy Technology Research Funding. That comment's supporting clean energy. On item 7.07, Platte approval for Canopy 3 Phase 2, one comment opposed to approval of that item. Those are the only comments on consent. Those were distributed to you earlier. And also, if there are those watching the meeting who would like to see the comments, they have been posted to the agenda, so they're available there for the public.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. I appreciate it. Colleagues, any questions for the clerk? Seeing none. Let's move on. Mr. Manager, do we have any appearances today before the City Commission?
No, sir, we do not.
We are on the consent agenda item. Have any items been pulled off of the consent agenda item?
No, sir.
Clerk just mentioned public comment for 7.05 and 7.07. Is there a motion for the consent agenda?
So moved, Mr. Mayor.
It's properly moved by Commissioner Richardson. Thank you. Seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment, all those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are now on 9.01, confirmation and reappointment of Citizens of Tallahassee Leon County Planning Commission. Mr. Manager?
The Treasurer Clerk will introduce this one, Mr. Mayor.
I apologize. Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, I will indeed introduce that item. This item is, I believe, there we go, reappointment. This item on 9.01 is actually an appointment by the Leon County School Board to the Planning Commission, but is an item that comes before the City Commission as a step in that process. And so Martha Chauncey is recommended as the School Board appointee.
Excellent. Do we have any public comment on this item?
We do not.
All right, let's open it up to Commissioner Discussion of Motions. Been properly moved by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Mr. Clerk, 9.02, please.
9.02, again, deals with appointments to a board. The Downtown Improvement Authority has two individuals, Cheryl Jackson and Scott Dick, who are recommended for reappointment to terms that will run from June 1st through May 31st of 2023. Those, again, are reappointments recommended for your approval.
Do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Thank you.
No public comment.
All right. Colleagues, any discussion, motions?
I'll move approval.
It's probably moved by Commissioner Matlow. By the way, thanks for serving on this and representing us, Commissioner Matlow.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on the introduction of ordinance. Madam Attorney, 10.01.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 10.01, introduction of ordinance number 20-0-22, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, creating sections 2-73 through 2-84 in Article 3 of Chapter 2 in the Code of General Ordinances, establishing an independent Office of Inspector General, provided for conflicts, provided for severability, and provided an effective date. The first and only public hearing is scheduled for July 8th, 2020. Let the record reflect that the ordinance was introduced.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
Mayor, there were two comments received on this item. One from a citizen, not opposed per se, but with concerns and some suggestions for your consideration. The other from the Chair of the Independent Ethics Board, again, commending the City Commission for dedication to good government and ethics, but also expressing a couple of concerns and suggesting a little more time in the process. But those were the only two comments, and as with the others for consent, they were distributed to you previously for your reading and then also were available for the public on the agenda.
Excellent, thank you. Before we move into commission discussion, this is a big item, and I'm very proud of this commission for moving forward with this. I do want to turn it over to the Auditor, Mr. Sutton, to give a brief presentation. And also, if you would like to address the letter from the Ethics Board and some of the issues that they raised as well, that'd be great. So Dennis, I'll turn it over to you.
Certainly. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you said, this is a big deal. And based on the commission's directive to develop this ordinance that establishes an inspector general within the city, it shows a continued effort by the city to enhance the public trust and our commitment to that by enhancing the efficiency and effectiveness of city operations, ensuring complaints regarding city operations and employees will be addressed in a fair and unbiased manner, and increasing the transparency of city government by issuing public reports based on the audits and investigations of the audit inspector general. I would love to thank my staff for their efforts and support in developing this ordinance. We worked hard researching the implementation of inspector generals at local governments, both in Florida and nationwide. With the information provided from that research and the best practices and guidance put out by the Association of Inspectors General, we have developed this ordinance that will establish an IG within the city under the authority of the city auditor. I'd like to take a brief moment to point out a few key aspects of this ordinance. First, it creates the Office of Inspector General, the first office of inspector general in the city of Tallahassee's history. The city auditor will serve as the inspector general and as such is independent from all other city operations, with the exception of the City Commission and the Ethics Board, both of which have oversight over the responsibility of the city auditor or inspector general. And as such, it would not be appropriate for the IG to have any role related to overseeing those two bodies. The ordinance clearly stipulates that the IG has the authority to audit or investigate issues and complaints regarding fraud, waste, abuse, mismanagement, misconduct, and service deficiencies. The ordinance also gives the authority to issue subpoenas, both for testimonies, testimony and evidence, not only for city employees and records, but also for those vendors, contractors and others doing business with or receiving city funds. It also establishes a fraud hotline and designates the inspector general as the appropriate official to receive whistleblower complaints and provide whistleblower protections. And I'll come back to this in a minute. The ordinance also requires timely resolution of those whistleblower complaints. And if those complaints are not addressed timely, the matters are referred to the State Department of Administrative Hearings, better known as DOA. And finally, I'd like to acknowledge that I've become aware of a letter from the City Ethics Board. And in that letter, the board identifies a couple of concerns they have with the proposed ordinance. And I'd like to proactively address those concerns. The first concern they stated was that there will be duplication of many responsibilities already assigned to the Ethics Board via the city charter. I'd like to reassure both you, the City Commission, and the Ethics Board that we've considered this matter very closely and to eliminate the possibility of duplication of efforts. We have intentionally included Section 2-8018 in the ordinance that states the inspector general has no authority over the Ethics Board, its employees, or matters identified as the board's responsibilities in the city charter. The second concern, and what they've stated is their more significant concern, relates to the establishment of a fraud hotline. As you all know, the Ethics Board already maintains an ethics hotline, and there's concern that calls or complaints inadvertently made to the incorrect hotline could result in a lack of confidentiality for the individual making the complaint. To address that, the Ethics Officer and I have talked, and we've agreed that for complaints that are received by the ethics hotline and are better addressed by the inspector general, those matters will be immediately referred to the inspector general by the Ethics Officer. And the confidentiality will be maintained on their end. And also for ethics complaints that are received by the inspector general, the same will be provided, that we will refer those matters immediately to the Ethics Officer and maintain confidentiality for those items as well. Thank you.
Mr. Auditor, I got to tell you that when you first brought this item to our attention on how to move your office in the city forward in 21st century, thank you. This is the right move. This is going to truly benefit the citizens of the city and the city itself, and I applaud you. I know there's been a lot of work for you and your staff, and I'm looking forward to supporting it. Mr. Auditor, does this also mean that once passed, we have to call you General Sutton?
I'm sure my dad would cringe at that.
Right, right, right. All kidding aside, thank you. We do appreciate it.
Thank you.
We have addressed the public comment on this issue. Let's open it up for Commissioner Dialogue and Motions.
Introduction of ordinance, right?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, thank you, Dennis. I think you answered a lot of questions. And Madam Attorney, I would just ask for clarification on the issue raised of confidentiality going from IG to the Ethics Board or vice versa. Them transferring that information, would that open it up to eliminating that confidentiality or having to be put into a public record?
Madam Attorney?
All the time, we have situations where we have to have someone manage the document, and it may have confidential matters on it. Staff is expected to maintain that information in a confidential fashion. Certainly, we know our auditor and the Ethics Officer will be able to maintain information that is on that hotline in a confidential manner.
Okay. So we'll be able to assure the public that whether they go to the Ethics Board or to the Inspector General, what they have to say is confidential?
Yes.
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. Madam Attorney, by the way, I do notice that usually on the introduction of ordinance, there's no action taken. However, on this one, there is a recommended action, a staff recommendation, which is the introduction of the ordinance and the scheduled, the only public hearing on July 8th. I am assuming that you would like a formal motion because of the recommended action that's listed.
Certainly.
Okay, great. Any other comment, colleagues? Yes, ma'am. Mayor Pro Tem?
Commissioner Bryant.
Dr. Bryant, thank you. Commissioner Bryant?
Yes. Dennis, this is an excellent job. We've all had opportunity to speak with you, and it's excellent work. I do have one question that I'm sure you can help me understand. On page 1 of 8, we talk about performance reviews. And on page 4 of 8, we talk about, in section 2 under number 2, the functions conduct reviews of the city's performance management system. Are we talking, is this one and the same?
Yes, ma'am.
Performance reviews are, because performance reviews can be confusing because people see that as something individual to themselves. And in fact, I thought you were talking about the actual performance system for the city. So I think that differentiation probably needs to, performance reviews probably needs to be replaced with the appropriate language that you have over on page 4, which is the city's performance management system.
Okay, thank you. We will look into making that a change.
Very good.
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Richardson, yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just also want to commend our city auditor, Mr. Sutton, for the work that he and his staff have done on this ordinance, working with our city attorney. I think what this will do is certainly give our citizens much more confidence in our city government. I think we certainly, our citizens feel confident in our city government, but this will give them even more confidence in addition to what we have done in terms of the power that we've given our Ethics Board. So citizens can rightly feel comfortable that if there is even any suspicion of any wrongdoing, any corruption, malfeasance, misfeasance, or the like, that it will be investigated, and they can be assured that it would be weeded out of city government. And so Dennis, thank you for all the work that you've done in that regard. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the staff recommendation on this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson. It's been properly moved by Commissioner Richardson for staff recommendation. Is there a second to the motion? Seconded by the rest of the board. Any further comment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I'd like to also congratulate Dennis and his office on this. I know we've been talking about this for a while, and this is further down the path. I also wanted to point out a couple of things that will probably become very important in an upcoming item that we're going to be discussing, that with this function, that the inspector general will have subpoena power, right?
Yeah.
You will also be independent, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, so we want to hold those two thoughts for another agenda item. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor of the motion on the table signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Attorney Sutton, thank you very much. Certainly do appreciate it. We're now on policy formation and direction, 11.01. Mr. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This item, item 1101, requests your approval to issue a request for proposals for the sale or exchange of approximately 0.92 acres on Eugenia Street, which is not far from the roundabout at Wanish Way in FAMU Way. This property is the remaining portion of a larger site that was purchased as part of the FAMU Way Road Project. It anticipated that any bids received, any proposals received to purchase the remaining parcel will exceed the original amount paid per square foot for this property. The city has received some interest, having received multiple calls and two unsolicited offers from a company called Off-Campus Housing, which is an agent for Summit Capital Properties to purchase or exchange the property. Staff has since been contacted by two additional parties interested in receiving information about any potential sale of the property. Our real estate management group recommends that we make this property for sale, available for sale via RFP process. And I would like, I want to add just a little more clarity to this, Mr. Mayor. If you'll indulge me and have Mr. Tetter, Assistant City Manager Tetter, kind of describe the nature of the property, what it's zoned for, and what possible uses are.
Mr. Tetter, good to see you.
Hey, good afternoon, everyone. Mayor and City Commissioners, when we were doing the planning for FAMU Way, I met with the FAMU leadership at the time, and one of their goals was to encourage their residential population to live on campus or immediately adjacent to campus. This was a very important area for the university president at the time and the leadership team to encourage the students to live near the university. And they were doing that because the studies they had seen was that the students who lived on or near the university were more successful and graduated at higher rates. With that being said, the property is on university transition, and basically it allows very high-density residential that is associated with student housing. It allows commercial, all the uses that would be associated with universities and near universities. There has been some correspondence with staff in the last couple of days regarding purchase of the property for other types of uses, such as affordable housing, things like that. Because it's university transition, technically, housing of high and low density would be allowed, but I wouldn't encourage affordable housing to be mixed in with student housing development that's intended for the property. We did reach out to the Bond Neighborhood First Community Group. We wanted to make sure that the recommendations that we had to you was not in conflict with their desires for the area. And Ashley and her team made that contact and came back with, they had no objection for the sale of the land. This land, if, once we receive requests for proposals, we will bring that back to you all. And so you will have another review at what's being proposed on the site. We are requesting that on the site, they would have an illustration so that you can see physically what they're proposing, as well as the cost amount. So we'll bring those recommendations back to you at the time we receive a final recommendation from the committee that will review the RFP.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on just a second. Thank you, Mr. Tetter. Do we have any public comment, Mr. Clerk?
Mayor, we have one comment that we received on this item. That comment addresses the item in context of affordable housing, but that was the only one that we received.
Excellent, thank you. I'm sorry, was that Commissioner Richardson?
Yes.
Commissioner Richardson? Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for Mr. Tetter. Wayne, when the property is sold or exchanged, if it's exchanged, will the property that we exchange for be made available for affordable housing? If it's sold, will the revenue generated from that sale be put in our affordable housing trust fund?
We have seen a proposal to exchange land, and that's why you see our recommendation in exchange or sell.
Right.
And the property that was recommended, to be quite honest with you, would be a very appropriate location for affordable housing that I have seen. With that being said, our typical process for sale of land would go to our deficiencies fund. If it's fully defunded, then we move down to our capital project funding pot of money. If you are to direct the dollars in a different way, you'd need to make that a part of your recommendation. But again, the property was purchased with infrastructure dollars, and so the hope is that we would turn it back to infrastructure, whether it's located within the immediate area or throughout the rest of the city, you have that ability as well.
Okay.
Commissioner Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Any other comment, motions? Commissioner Richardson makes a motion for staff recommendation, seconded by the Mayor Pro Tem. Any further comment? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Mr. City Manager, 11.02?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item seeks your approval to establish a pilot electric vehicle charging station program for Tallahassee. As you know, last year, you adopted a renewable energy plan to take us to be a leader in our nation as it relates to renewable energy and clean energy. And staff, our energy staff, have been constantly working. While they have developed the process for the community input and preparing that plan, they've not stopped working on items that could happen today as well, like electric vehicle charging. Again, while this transition has already started in our community as it relates to electric vehicles, we believe the city has a role to work towards the facilitation of electric vehicles, which could be charging stations, in the sense that they're kind of like modern-day gas stations beyond just the pedestal chargers that you see around that are lower amperage and longer charging times. But something more along the lines of fast charging in fueling stations. And so we're pretty excited about the program. Rob McGarren and his team have been putting it together. They've been working on the concept to see if it's feasible. I think we're there. And I would like Rob, who's our General Manager of Electric and Gas, to give us a little more detail about this.
Mr. McGarren, thanks for joining us.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. We appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk about this pilot. As the manager mentioned, this is another step along the Clean Energy Plan, and it's a role the city can play to help the community expand the use of electric vehicles by providing some of the charging infrastructure. The concept we have, and I'm going to try to pull up the attachment that was in the agenda item. I hope you can see it there, is Power TLH. This is an artist rendering of what one of these charging stations could look like. This one has a couple DC fast chargers and some Level 2 chargers. So the concept would be to locate these around the city. And right now, we're asking for authorization to install up to four of these as pilots in areas where there's normal, folks would be gathering anyway and have things to do while the cars are being charged. So this could be in some of our parks. We could end up working some arrangements with a commercial facility to have it adjacent to a shopping center or some other activity center so that while the cars are being charged, the customer or the citizen would have something to do. We would own and operate these out of the electric and gas utility. And we would look for setting this up to where it would be customer-friendly from a paying perspective, either use credit cards or an app, preferably an app where someone could come in and set up to pay for the charging. We'd look to set the rates in an area where we do full cost recovery, both the capital and operating costs for the facility, just like we do with our other enterprise fund rates. And, but we would fully expect that rate to be lower than the cost of gasoline. So that's the concept. We've started talking to some other departments in the city, real estate and parks and recs, about potential sites that we might use. We've not settled in on any recommended sites yet. There's still some work to do there. We wanted to get through this evening and see your comfort level with us moving down the road with this. the road with this new product line. So we would then find sites and then start the engineering and development. Now, I do know that there have been some questions about the sourcing method that we had in the recommended option to piggyback. That's an acceptable form of procurement activities under our policies, but we're really indifferent from a staff and a product line development perspective, whether we piggyback on those contracts or go with option two, which would have us issuing a separate request for proposals or bids for the equipment and services here. So either of those work equally well for us in the rollout of this concept. And then the last comment I wanted to add is Tesla has also, a representative of Tesla has reached out. They have a slightly different model than we're talking about for charging stations for Tesla owners, but they've reached out to us and our team has talked to them today. And we think there's a way to integrate in their model with us and work together. So we'll be working with them as we go down the road with this pilot rollout. So with that, we are asking, requesting your approval to move forward with this concept, to fund it with $2 million out of the electric RR&amp;I, undesignated RR&amp;I fund is the seed money, and then your direction on whether you would like, whether you're comfortable with us piggybacking on the other contracts, or whether you would prefer we go down the road of option two and do a separate request for proposal or bids, whatever's appropriate at that time. And I'm available for any questions you might have.
Thank you, Mr. McGarren. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comments on this item?
Mayor, we did receive six comments on this item, all very much in support of the item. We also mentioned, we did receive a comment on this item after our 11:00 AM cutoff for distribution of comments, so I don't know the nature of it, but any of those like that that we received after 11:00, but before the meeting, will be made part of the public record. I just can't tell you what the nature of that comment was.
Excellent. Thank you so much, appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Let's go to Commissioner's discussion. Let me tell you, Mr. McGarren and Mr. Manager, I am thrilled with this item. This is true forward-thinking public policy. As we are moving forward with our goal of 100% renewable, we know that in order to, you know, incentivize the private industry, we have to have infrastructure in place. And quite frankly, I think that this is the future of gas stations in society as more electric cars come online. I applaud you for thinking creatively. I think this is a great item. Mr. McGarren, I do agree with you and do strongly encourage my colleagues to support option number two. I do think that we should go to RFP, if anything, for just full transparency, and let's see what's out there, and let's see what everybody can bring to the table.
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Dr. Bryant for option number two. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, we'll go Commissioner Matlow, Commissioner Richardson.
I just want to echo everything the mayor just said. I couldn't agree more. And I agree, we, at $2 million, that's about my threshold of, let's put it out to bid just to make sure everybody's comfortable with it. So I appreciate the words and happy to be moving forward with this. The mockups look awesome, so I think people will be excited to see it.
I agree, I agree.
I thought you were going to tell us that you had a Tesla, Commissioner?
Mr. Mayor, I too just wanted to commend the city manager and our utilities director, Mr. McGarren, for their forward-thinking. This is another huge step.
Yes.
Forward with respect to our commitment to becoming carbon neutral by 2050, earlier if possible. And so this adds another arrow to our quiver, if you will, in that respect, and I'm excited to see it move forward. The only question that I had, Rob, and I might have missed it, would Tesla, did you say Tesla was interested in a proposal or partnering, or what was their role again?
Well, we had a representative of Tesla reach out to us, reach out to the city and indicate that they would like to be a part of the charging. Tesla has its own proprietary charger plug, if you will, and so it's different than what we would put in for the balance of the EV fleet. They also have a slightly different model, as I understand it right now, with respect to charging, customers paying. But we reached out to them earlier today and said, let's work together and see if there's not a way to partner or work their model with our model and make it work. So we'll be having those discussions as we go forward.
Okay, great, because I know that there are lots of our residents that do have the Teslas. I'm sure that Commissioner Matlow will be getting his soon, and I'm sure, I'm sure that they would like to have this available in the city as well. And so again, I applaud the forward-thinking. This, I think, certainly puts the city of Tallahassee at the forefront of these efforts. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Excellent. The motion's been made for option number two by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson, seeing no further comment. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. We are on item number eleven point oh three, Mr. Manager and Ms. Edwards.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners. This is, this is a long overdue item, in my opinion. We've talked about it. You brought this up at your April 8th city commission meeting. We've been exploring this possibility for the last, at least as far as I'm concerned, the last year and a half or two, maybe longer. But I think we certainly have a great opportunity, and we're recommending your approval. Let me give some background and ask Ms. Edwards to give a little more detail. This item involves the naming of the green space that's at Clement Plaza today, directly behind City Hall. It's a beautiful space, it's well-used, and naming it in honor of former mayor and city commissioner Don Emmon Johnson. This item provides, and you have, and Ashley will elaborate more, the many contributions that Ms. or Mayor Emmon Johnson made while she was elected in office, and she was a pioneer. As each of you know, she was the first African-American woman elected to the city commission in 1986. She also became the first African-American female mayor later that decade, serving our community, and went on to serve into the 90s. Again, this item seeks your formal approval. You discussed it. We would like you to take formal action to name this space after her and in her honor. We have some details I would like to share. I think it's appropriate at this time to share of her accomplishments and just general next steps forward. Our Parks and Recreation Director, Ashley Edwards, is here with us on this webex, and I'd like, at this point, to turn it over to her to add some more details.
Great. Ms. Edwards, thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Manager. As you mentioned, Mayor Emmon Johnson's contributions to the community were significant. And just to hit a couple of highlights that I think are worth mentioning here today, in addition to the ones, or to go along with the ones that are mentioned in the agenda item, she was involved with the creation of the Mini Pass program that was for street and sidewalk improvements in our community. She was very much in support of the preservation of historic districts, including Frenchtown, as well as supported many renovations to the Riley House Museum that's recently been acquired by the city. She was involved with the development of the project that at the time was known as the Capitol Commons Project, that is currently now known as Clement Plaza. So again, very fitting that this is an area that we've chosen, I hope that you will choose to honor her with her name on it. She supported the revitalization of the downtown area in general with investments in the Adam Street Commons, as well as Jefferson Street improvements. She also was, during her time in office, she was part of supporting the creation of seven new fire stations, as well as nine new city parks. And one of the things I always make sure to mention when talking to anyone about Mayor Emmon Johnson is her longstanding support of our city parks and recreation programs. She has been a very, very long-serving member of the Tallahassee Friends of Our Parks Foundation's Board of Trustees, and it's really a moment of personal pleasure for my part to be able to take part in requesting that this facility be named in her honor for all the things that she has done for our community. She's truly helped shape the city that we all are enjoying today. So with that, and in honor of these accomplishments, we're recommending that you rename the green space area at Clement Plaza, the Dorothy Emmon Johnson Park on the Plaza, which we think is a very fitting name. We'll, with your approval, we'll work with her to determine appropriate signage and appropriate time when we're able to dedicate that space in her honor. And again, we just think it's a very fitting honor. Our Parks Advisory Board has been made aware of this request as well, and they were supportive. And again, our hope is that you will choose to rename that park today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We did receive one comment on the item, didn't even comment on support. I think it took that as a given, just wanted to be sure the signs were big enough and appropriate enough that everybody would know that it was Dorothy Emmon Johnson Park on the Plaza.
Excellent, excellent.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm sorry?
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor pro tem, yes, ma'am.
As the second African-American to be elected to the city commission in its 196-year history, standing on the shoulders of Mayor Don Emmon Johnson, it gives me great pleasure to make the motion that we accept staff recommendation.
It has been properly, it has been properly moved by the mayor pro tem and seconded for Dr. Bryant, Commissioner Bryant, for the recommended motion to name the park after former mayor Don Emmon Johnson. Madam Attorney, I want you to know that my extremely strong support for this is not to be considered quid pro quo, because this wonderful woman was my third-grade teacher, and I may or may not have given her a lot of trouble back in third grade when I was a student. I'm not trying to pay for, pay for any past sins as a third grader, okay? I just want, I just want to get that out there on the record. Bless her heart, she tried to teach me art in third grade and, you know.
Knowledge.
No, how fitting, how wonderful. In fact, I'd like to take the extra step and ceremonially ask for unanimous consent in both the motion and the second to the motion by the entire board, seeing no objections. It passes unanimously, five zero. And we look forward, by the way, actually, to the, all the details of the actual dedication ceremony. Thank you. We are now on item eleven point oh four, Mr. City Manager.
Thank you, sir. We discussed this item at your last meeting. It involves the creation of some new technology via a mobile app that citizens could use if they wanted to, when they were interacting with the police department, or law enforcement for that matter, that would trigger recording and other functionality hands-free, and then that recording and information could be sent automatically to another source. You heard at your last meeting from our Technology and Innovation Director, Tim Davis, he kind of gave an outline of how the process would work. He and his team have talked more about this. They have generally identified an estimate of cost of approximately $50,000. It's a very early estimate, but we're seeking your approval to assign that project amount. And we wanted to bring back a continued discussion, a little more information in this process, and again, seek your approval to create a project in the amount of $50,000, and also ask for your approval to use any pre-existing contracts that we made, and any expedited procurement process as appropriate to make sure we fast-track this development effort. At this time, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, if I could ask Tim to provide us a little more detail and update and answer questions.
Thank you, City Manager. Mayor, Commissioners, and all appointed officials, just to add on to what City Manager's already discussed, part of the requirement gathering was to identify the appropriate people who would actually provide that level of information for my team to be able to develop, or at least to do the analysis in the early stages of what the requirements are. So a committee was put together. That committee is actually made up of some of the technology innovation staff, as well as the police department. We've got citizen representation. We were able to contact with three students that were part of the original discussion. They're all on board, also legal team is there. And so as we gather those requirements and starting to get the essence of what is needed, concerns have actually been brought up. Those concerns in reference to our legal, some privacy issues, and also dealing with some general public safety, as well as officer safety. And so as we continue to gather those requirements, this committee will be meeting on a regular basis so that we can kind of refine those type of things. While the requirements gathering was actually going on, what we're doing is a market analysis. And one of the things that we've already found in the market is that there's some shortcuts or apps that are out there that actually go with the people with Apple devices. Apple has a shortcut app that allows some of these same functionalities that have just been generalized and spoke about to be conducted today. And so we see this as an immediate impact that can actually be used by our citizens, again, to raise the level of safety and definitely deal with the issues in terms of concern. And so we will continue to look at the market and look at any other applications or vendors who are providing this type of service. And we also recognize that even though the Apple community has a shortcut app, we are still concerned by the Android population and trying to figure out how we can then address those things as well. So our next steps will be continue to go through a refining process of our requirements. We will continue to identify and actually address any of the concerns that have been raised up and making sure that we are adding value to what we're putting out on the street, as well as conduct these a market analysis, and then look again, as City Manager described, taking the initial approval from you to go out and either procure this process or look to develop it in-house.
Thank you, Tim. Certainly do appreciate it. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No, sir.
Thank you. All right, let's open it up for any questions to Mr. Davis or the city manager, discussion, motions?
We accept as a staff recommendation our option one.
Mayor pro tem properly moves it, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Commissioner Bryant, you had questions?
Yes, I have a comment. I just wanted to, first of all, thank Tim and his staff for quickly responding to a request that we received in the midst of challenges in our city. We had persons to come forward. Not only have they come to some degree of weight forward, they included those same people as a part of the discussion, and I think that is so reflective of who we are as a city. When we hear that there are issues and there is a way to resolve it, and we not only do it internally, but we have put people in that had an issue with the court. So hats off to Tim and his staff.
Wonderful.
I do say.
Any further comments? Seeing none. Staff recommendations been properly moved by the mayor pro tem, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, five zero. Eleven point oh five, Madam Attorney.
Hi, this is a discussion, thank you. It's a discussion of the citizen, the Police Citizens Review Board. At the June 3rd, 2020 city commission meeting, direction was provided to move forward with initial steps toward the creation of a Police Citizen Review Board. The creation of a Citizen Review Board is in response to citizen requests. The city commission provided broad direction that the board members would be city commission-appointed after an application process and receive required training on police policy and procedure. They would perform after-the-fact reviews, that is, after the conclusion of a grand jury investigation or internal affairs investigation, and provide recommendations as to best practices. And looking into this matter, I reviewed the final report of the President's Task Force on 20th Century Policing, published in 2015, which emphasized the importance of citizen involvement in policing as a strategy to improve trust between law enforcement and the public. The local government, in addition to other steps, the report specifically provided the following action step. Define the appropriate form and structure of civilian oversight to meet the needs of Thus, it is recommended that the city widely advertise the board is being formed and notify the community when applications are being accepted. As for the specific recommendations regarding the Police Citizen Review Board, based on statute and case law, the board should perform an after-the-fact the board should perform an after-the-fact review of internal affairs investigations and also of internal affairs investigations of excessive force and use of deadly force by police officers, as well as provide recommendations regarding policies and procedures of the police department as requested by the chief of police or the city manager and as matters are brought to the attention of this board. The city auditor or designated may serve as an assigned staff to the citizen review board. As the city auditor pursuant to Section 33 of the city charter is authorized to have access to all records, he can facilitate the receipt of information by the board and provide audit expertise. And in addition to this, the following components are recommended based on a review of Florida review boards. The board may be composed of nine members appointed by the city commission. The members should serve in non-compensated staggered terms of three years, must not be a relative of any city employee, and receive training on Tallahassee Police Department policies and procedures, participate in the police academy and a ride-along. The board should have authority to review and provide recommendations on completed internal affairs investigations involving the use of excessive force and deadly force and provide recommendations as such specifically stated prior to this. Finally, the board should prepare an annual report to the city commission, the city manager, and the chief of police regarding the board's reviews over the preceding year to include statistics and summaries of citizen complaints, a comparison of board findings and conclusions with actions taken by the chief of police, and including recommendations related to changes in policies and procedure. With that general overview, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Madam Attorney, and job well done drafting this item. Certainly do appreciate it. All right, I've got questions for all of the four appointments. First of all, Mr. Manager, do you have any comments? On the police department is under your purview as City Manager. Your thoughts?
I do. Thank you for allowing me to comment on this. I think, for one, I want to compliment the city attorney for putting this together. Certainly, we talked about this. This does impact the police department, and I think that the recommendation was well done. I know that it was based on the best practices from around the state of Florida. It's put together within the framework, the legal framework of the state of Florida. And I do believe it adds transparency and greater citizen engagement into the processes of the police department, which are welcomed by Chief Revel and his staff in terms of making sure that the department is the best it could possibly be. It is an example for the country, and I think this is an appropriate step. We know the genesis of this is your last meeting, your discussion. Again, you have to work within the confines of what's allowable within the state. But I think this does an excellent job. It does incorporate the powers of the city auditor, which you have begun the process to expand to include the inspector general. I think that it's complimentary and I think that adds value. So I appreciate you allowing me to comment on it. And I think I strongly encourage the recommended action.
Excellent, thank you. Mr. Auditor, obviously, your office will be tasked with staffing this board, either you personally or through your office. I just want to give you the opportunity to provide comment as well.
Well, I look forward to supporting the board in any way possible if it moves forward as proposed by the city attorney. We're here to assist and help as any way possible.
Excellent, thank you. And finally, Mr. Clerk, public comments in regards to this item?
Yes, Mayor, this was the item that got the majority of the comments for this meeting. We received well over 300 comments. Tried to apprise you as commissioners as we went over the last few days, but by the time of our cutoff, we, as I said, well over 300 comments. Many of those expressed themselves using the same or similar language and points. And so for you or citizens, that's a large number to digest, but I think there are some common points. And like I said, maybe even some of the similar language utilized by different individuals. Received comments from citizens of Tallahassee, but also even had some from other states and other countries. So I think you've had a chance to look at those. A lot of those supported the idea of a board, but with some substantial differences, including some recommendation for elected review board. But that's, I think that's as good a summary as I can provide on that large variety of comments.
Excellent. Let's turn it over for our commission discussion. We'll start with the Mayor Pro Tim.
Mr. Mayor, can we hear from the deputy chief and the deputy city manager? Because she's also a direct report to her.
Of course. Ms. Barbara, are you with us?
I'm with you, Mayor. I'd like to just echo the city manager's comments. I think that the plan as proposed moves the city forward is very consistent with what we strive for every day in PD. And so I'm looking forward to having that kind of review of our operations.
Wonderful, thank you. Madam Pro Tim, you have the floor again.
Thank you. And thank you, colleagues, for supporting this motion at the last meeting. We know that this has been something that citizens have been asking for for a long time. They didn't give us a lot of detail to start with, so I want to thank the city attorney for looking throughout the state to find out what's going on out there that we could possibly use. And I also want to thank everybody for your role that you played in this with the treasurer clerk in trying to manage all of these messages because you were getting messages, we were getting phone calls and messages. So while I am happy that Tallahassee is getting a lot of attention from outside of Leon County, we must remain focused on providing the level of support that our residents have come to expect. So thank you for everyone who participated and let us know what you think. So there was a resounding theme in every comment that I read, and I did read the majority of them until I saw that many of them were form letters. And so I wanted to make sure that I didn't miss anything. There's a call for independence. There's a call for subpoena power. There's a call for autonomy, and there's a call for having an elected body. So I'd like to address those items. The independence that is being called for can be handled by the auditor's office as well as the inspector general function. We just heard that just a few minutes ago. The inspector general also has subpoena power. But the subpoena power that I feel that residents are asking for is to be able to interrogate police officers. And we know that according to the Officers Bill of Rights, we're not going to be able to do that. But there are others and other information and maybe other individuals that may be able to be brought in with the support of the inspector general's office to be able to perform that function without having to parlay it to this board. Am I correct, Dennis?
I believe I'd have to work with the city attorney to get a clear understanding of the legal use of the subpoena power as to when it's appropriate outside of a specific investigation that's ongoing.
Okay, so that, but the possibility is there. It's a greater possibility of being able to do that here than to give it to another group.
There might be, but like I said, I'd have to work with the city attorney to clarify exactly when it would be appropriate to use that authority.
Absolutely. And let's hope that we don't ever have to use any of this, but, you know, we want to make sure we got it there. The autonomy, I'm not exactly sure what is meant by having autonomy because if a group wants to form, we can't stop them from forming, but we won't be able to grant them any special powers of autonomy. And then there's the elected piece. I will ask our residents to remember that we were elected as a commission. We were elected, and it is, I believe that it is our job to serve as that elected body to represent, represent. And in all of the agencies that we looked at around the state, Madam Attorney, you can help me. For the majority of those agencies, the members of this board were appointed by the commission. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so there is no precedence set to elect another body to do this. And it would possibly require going into the charter to do that. And we've had a discussion earlier about going into the charter and didn't think that it was the appropriate time to do that. I know that there's a great distrust of elected officials. There's a great distrust of the police department. But at some point, putting another body on the line, another group of people on the line, there would be mistrust of them as well when they don't do what you're thinking that you want them to do. So I would like to eliminate having so many people going under scrutiny that we go under to do the job that we do. And let's treat this board like we treat the other committees that we have, like the planning committee. Those individuals are placed there, as we did tonight, by the voting of the commission. I think that we can get this done. We've had nothing, is what I've said to people who I've spoken with. But now we can go from zero to 55. And then if we want to get to 70, which is the speed limit in many places, ask me how I know. We have time to get there, but we must start somewhere. And I think that we've made a great start. And we welcome constructive input and constructive criticism even. But we've got to understand and operate within the law and within what we have available to us at this point in time. Now, if something should change in the Florida legislature, then of course we will operate accordingly. But where we are right now, as I understand it, Madam Attorney, this is based on what's going on around the state. These are the best practices from around the state, large and small and whatever size. I know that Miami, Miami has a, they have subpoena power. But even in that, as I recall, they are not able to interrogate police officers. Is that correct?
That is correct. As a matter of fact, that was the very case that was decided by the Supreme Court in 2017. They did not issue subpoenas to police officers or interrogate.
So right now, our climate is not a good climate. And, you know, it's like you don't go to the grocery store when you're hungry because you pick up more stuff than you need to. But right now, our country is in a very anti-police state until we need them. And what I want to make sure is that we back up off of the emotion because that's what I'm having to do, to back up off of the emotion, and let's get something that is tangible. Someone's even said to me that is ceremonious. I don't do ceremonies. This is not a ceremony. This was an exercise in trying to put some structure together. There will be opportunities for individuals to speak on this. As I've said to folks, I believe our next meeting is going to be in person, right? Right, City Manager?
Yes, ma'am. It appears to be so, yes, ma'am.
So you'll have your opportunity to come and talk to us directly at the next meeting. And even in that, in the agenda item, it's coming back in September, I believe, is what I saw.
September 9 for introduction.
It's not like we're going to pass this tonight and just go off into the dark. That's not how we operate. We do want transparency, but we need, we need people to understand how this needs to work. We need people to understand how police officers do have rights, just like we do. And we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing for our city. Granted, we, again, we're in a very tense and emotional state right now, but we want to put something in place that's going to stand beyond this period of time that we're in. So with that being said, I am hoping that we can move forward and create something that we can all be very proud of and that we can all accept. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Madam Mayor Pro Tim, are you making a motion for staff recommendation of option number one?
I am, but I would like to hear what my colleagues have to say. So if someone could second that, so we can continue the discussion.
I will second that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Richardson.
Mute it.
There's much more that can be said. Mayor Pro Tim, you have eloquently summarized this issue, where we are and where we're headed. You know, we have tried to put together, our attorney has, what is a compilation of the best practices of police review from throughout the state. And I'm sure practices even throughout the country. And that's where we are at this point. And we do have to back off from the emotion. Listen, I grew up in the segregated South in a little town called Green Cove Springs. And growing up in that little town, I can tell you how African Americans, particularly African American males, were mistreated. They were jailed, they were beaten. And these are some of the things that we even witnessed as children and couldn't understand why these kinds of things were happening to African Americans in our community. But they did, they happened then. And so I have a personal feelings, if you will, towards this and know that these are the kinds of things that the police have a history of dating back even to those times when I was growing up in little old Green Cove Springs. But we have moved forward. I've seen a lot of advancement even in our own agency with our community policing. I was told by the city manager that even with the incident that happened in the Holton Street Apartments with the killing and the police-involved shooting, that it was because of the relationship that our community-oriented policing squad had with the residents of that complex that they were able to de-escalate some of the emotion in that crowd because the residents, the police officers were able to talk with the residents who they had formed personal relationships with. And so we've done a lot in that regard. I think we need to redouble our efforts for community policing. We've done the Operation Safe Neighborhoods where we went door-to-door in high-crime neighborhoods in our community and talked with residents, building those kinds of relationships and giving them information about services and opportunities from the city of Tallahassee. So those things are occurring. Can more be done? Absolutely. I had a conversation with the city manager the other day about some of the policies. And we got a copy of the letter that Chief Revel sent to the city manager. And the city manager, I hope that Chief Revel can go over some of those. But some of these, some of the policies, for instance, even the policy that resulted in the death of Mr. Floyd in Minneapolis, Minnesota, that created a lot of the protests that are happening throughout the nation and the world. Those policies have, those kinds of policies have been eliminated in our police department. So we have begun to address those kinds of issues as well. And so Mayor Pro Tim, again, you have so eloquently summarized this issue. And I am totally in support of it. We will give the community the opportunity to have input. And if there's a way that we can better improve what we're proposing now, we will do that. We want to do what is in the best interest of the citizens of the city of Tallahassee and our many visitors that come to our all-America city. And so at this point, Mr. Mayor, I am in full support of what's being recommended by staff.
Excellent. Commissioner Bryant?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me first thank Commissioner Diane Williams-Cotz for especially the amount of effort she has put into this particular issue. And I would start by saying that I am 100% in support. We have a lot to work out over time, but you have to start somewhere. I am just so, and I was listening to Commissioner Richardson and thinking to myself that I am from the era. Back in the 60s, when I went to high school and middle school, that was desegregated and then became integrated. And then I experienced some of the same things that he talked about, probably to a larger degree. I do remember going to, and I won't call out the police, but the ice cream shop and going to the back door because I could not go to the front doors. And I only share these things because it is important that we are. And I only share these things because it is important that we all know that what we're putting in place right now moves us beyond the time of peaceful protests, which I support and then participated in for that matter. But we have to move beyond that and actually put pen to paper and start to develop actual goals that will change our culture, not just in the police department, not just at the city of Tallahassee either, but across the city, from state government, county government, city government, businesses. We have to do something rather than just talk about it. So I, I am in total support of the recommendation. Will it continue to evolve? Absolutely. Do we want input from our community? Absolutely. But it's time to actually write it down, establish accountability measures and move forward. And, and I can continue to talk about this because it's pretty personal to me also. But for now, let me just say that I am in total support and am ready to vote. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As we know, for decades, people have been talking about a community oversight or review board of law enforcement. I think we've seen, heard from a lot of people, seen a lot of motions, and I think it's important that we make sure, we continue the conversation in two ways. It's been brought up that a lot of people will likely come and speak on it in July, no matter what. And as we know, this is the final adoption. This is to come through in September and it'll go through a further process. I would recommend, there are things, and Mayor Pro Tem brought up most of the ones, things that we've been hearing about in our emails and elected board, subpoena power, control of hiring, firing the chief and union negotiations. As we know, some of these things would require a charter change. Some of these things we really just can't do because they're baked into state law, but I think it would be helpful going into the next meeting to take the list of the requests or demands that we've heard and lay out specifically what's in our purview. If this is something people really want to explore, that would need to go for a charter amendment or a petition driver or that sort of thing. Or if we're just absolutely unable to do it because of state law, have that too. I think if we have that information available, before we get to a point where we have 300 people speaking on specific things, I just want to be very clear of where our authority starts, where our authority ends, and if there's something more that people want that we can't deliver, let them know the process to go down to obtain that. I mean, I do think at the end of the day, we want this board for the community, right? It's, it's for, it's for them to build trust and we need to get it to a place where, where it has buy-in and it has trust. Because as, I agree with Mayor Pro Tem, at the end of the day, I believe the responsibility stops here at, at the City Commission where five elected officials, if there's issues, we, we should address them directly. So I, I understand the need or the want for an elected body. I don't have strong feelings one way or the other. I would say if we appointing positions, it should be a one-for-one appointment per Commissioner that has a direct tally for tally for somebody that you voted for. And that way, if you don't like the person who got appointed, you can take it up with the person that you elected to appoint them. But I, I mean, we're going to hear a lot more about this in July, but I just want to get ahead of the comments we know we're going to hear because we're hearing them. I don't think people are going to be satisfied with just what gets approved today. So if we can go ahead and address those comments in, in July to give some sort of framework of continuing the conversation before we get to September. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Richardson.
I know you're, you're going to want to have the final comment, but there were a couple of things I, I forgot to add.
No, please.
I, I think this is consistent certainly with what we heard from the student protesters that we stood on the street and talked to at length about the citizen review. We heard from them that this is the kind of thing that they want to see happen. And I haven't heard, I haven't heard any, from them, any opposition to what's being proposed because we had a conversation at length with some of the student leaders and this was the kind of thing that they asked for. The other thing that I wanted to ask the City Manager about, we talked about, they had also requested the development of the app that would trigger turning on the body camera. Mr. City Manager, where are we with that? And what, how quickly do we expect we can bring that online as well?
Yes, sir, Commissioner. We've got that fast track. You just took the vote to give us authority to establish a project. Tim Davis and his team have established a working group. I believe he indicated it was nine members and included three students.
Great.
And so we've, you know, with your authorization, we've got that on the fastest track possible. So you've given us spending authority, you've given us procurement authority, and Tim and his team have already engaged the public and experts. So I, I think we're moving as fast as possible.
Okay. So we've, we've almost immediately, as quickly as we could, addressed those issues that were brought to us by the student leaders at the beginning of, of this protest. And so I, I am happy that we, and I'm certainly want to make sure that we let them know that these issues have been addressed at this point by our commission. And again, give them the opportunity to have input into this as well.
Excellent. Thank you. Motion's been properly made by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by the Mayor. No further comments. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
As opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. We are on item number 11.06. Ms. Manager and Ms. Baldwin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to ask Ms. Baldwin to provide this one in its entirety. I'd like her to kind of explain the, the need for this passenger counter device and technology, and I'm going to turn it over to her, sir.
Excellent. Thank you, Ms. Baldwin. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. As you know, Star Metro, we aggressively pursue federal and state grant funding opportunities. And to secure these grants, we rely heavily on data and accurate passenger information. And Star Metro is required to report ridership data to the Federal Transit Administration and other agencies regularly, which impact our formula funding. And in addition, reliable and accurate passenger data relating to passenger volumes, points of origin, destination, and ride times are critical for good system planning. And currently, Star Metro operates automatic passenger counters on 31 of our 67 express buses. And this item seeks your approval to award and authorize the City Manager or designated and execute a contract with Urban Transportation Associates for the purchase and installation of automatic passenger counters on Star Metro's bus fleet. The project cost is estimated to be $350,000, which will be funded in equal parts by state grant and local funds. Thank you.
Thanks, Ms. Baldwin. Let me go ahead and ask the clerk. Getting feedback here. Let me go ahead and ask the clerk if we have any public comment on this item.
No comments, Mayor.
Excellent. Let's move into Commissioner's Discussion of Motion. By the way, Ms. Baldwin, you are spoiling us. It seems that at every meeting, you are either bringing in state or federal money. And here we have an incredible opportunity and we will be paying for it through both a state grant and, and some of our funds. Congratulations. You, you continue to do an incredible job with our mass transit system and we certainly appreciate it.
Move approval of staff recommendation, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Richardson moves approval of staff recommendation. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
And properly seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number 11.07.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This item involves a contract that the city has had with Florida and M University for many, many years, which allows for its students to ride throughout our Star Metro system at no cost to the student. I think this is important to share with you as well as the public to understand the relationship and really the benefit available to the FAMU students in our area. And so I'd like Angela to kind of describe the relationship and how the contract works.
Ms. Baldwin, once again.
Thank you again. Star Metro began transit service to FAMU back in the 90s, in 1990. And in 2002, this U-Pass program began giving the students the ability to use our entire system with their FAMU student ID. And with the U-Pass program, FAMU provides their student ID numbers to us that we load into our system. And each time a FAMU student swipes their student ID to board, our system tracks that trip data and Star Metro bills the university a discounted rate for those trips. We also provide a grace period at the beginning of each semester to allow students time to get their, their IDs in place. And in fiscal year 2019, we served over 50,000 students through this U-Pass program. And this year, we've served close to 12,000 before the COVID-19 closure. Approval today will extend the contract that is set to expire at the end of this month and allow no interruption in service and a seamless transition for students as they return this fall, as well as continuing our partnership with FAMU.
Ms. Baldwin, thank you so much for your hard work and dedication. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No comments on this item, Mayor.
Wonderful. Let's open it up for Commission Discussion of Motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am. Mayor Pro Tem.
I move acceptance of staff recommendation.
It's been properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Commissioner Richardson seconds the motion. Any further discussion? Seeing none? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Mr. Manager, do we have any other business to come before us under policy formation and direction?
No, sir, we do not.
Wonderful. We have a public hearing at 5 o'clock. What is the will of the commission? It's only 4:20. We can go ahead with the sharing of ideas if you would like to now, or we can go ahead and break and do the sharing of ideas after the public hearing. Mayor Pro Tem, I'm going to let you make the decision. What would you like to do?
Let's break.
Let's go ahead and break. We will come back at 5 o'clock and we will do the sharing of ideas after the public hearing. Thank you. We stand, we stand, we stand at recess. I would encourage everyone to leave their computers logged in, just mute. Excellent. Commissioner Matlow?
President.
I see Commissioner Bryant, I see Commissioner, the, the Mayor Pro Tem. Okay. Let's go ahead and call the public hearing to order. First order of this is 13.01. Madam Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 13.01 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-0-21, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, amending Chapter 2, Article 5, Division 3 of the Tallahassee Code of General Ordinances relating to municipal code enforcement, writing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The amendment includes the following. It inserts references to code magistrate in certain sections where previously omitted, removes obsolete provisions concerning terms of initial code enforcement board members, provides gender-neutral references to code board chair, clarifies enforcement procedure, clarifies separate public hearing required for imposition of fines, removes mandatory number of meetings, and updates section concerning issuance of notice to comply with current state law.
Excellent. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No speakers, no comment.
Excellent. Open it up for comment, motions.
We acceptance of staff recommendation.
Mayor Pro Tem has properly moved the staff recommendation, seconded by Commissioner Bryant. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously, 5-0. Item number 13.02, Madam Attorney.
Item number 13.02 is the first of two public hearings on resolution number 20-R-28. The second public hearing is scheduled on July 8, 2020. A resolution of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating a Brownsville area for the purposes of economic development, environmental remediation, and rehabilitation, authorizing the City Manager to notify the Florida Department of Environmental Protection of this designation, providing an effective date. The Lafayette Gardens reuse area is being proposed for a Brownsville designation by its owner HTG Lafayette LLC. The Brownsville area designation would allow the property owner to take advantage of various state and federal incentives. The Florida statutes provide for the designation of certain areas as Brownsville. A Brownsville site is a real, is real property, the expansion, redevelopment, or reuse of which may be complicated by actual or perceived contamination. If the area is designated as a Brownsville, it will be developed as a multifamily affordable residential housing complex. No action is required on this item today, only the holding of the public hearing.
No action required, but Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No comment on this item, Mayor.
Okay, no action, but are there any questions of the City Attorney? Seeing none? 13.03, Madam Attorney.
Item number 13.03 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-Z-10A-A, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee amending the Evening Rose Plan Unit Development on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, writing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date. The applicant is requesting an amendment to the existing Evening Rose PUD concept plan. The Evening Rose PUD is located on 13.51 acres of the southwest corner of Capital Circle Northeast and East of Stanley Road. Evening Rose is a mixed-use project incorporating many traditional neighborhood design concepts. Proposed amendment to the Evening Rose PUD will add .75 acres to the PUD as green space for use as a playground for an existing private school.
Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
No comment on this item, Mayor.
We do have a recommended action for option number one. Colleagues, motion, comments?
We accept.
It's properly moved by the Mayor Pro Tem, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Item number 13.04, Madam Attorney.
Item number 13.04 is the first and only public hearing on ordinance number 20-Z-17, proposed amendment to the official zoning map to change the zoning classification from light industrial M1 zoning district to the general commercial C-2 zoning district, an ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida, designating and including additional territory as a general, general commercial C-2 on the official zoning map, providing for conflicts and severability and providing us an effective date.
Excellent. Mr. Clerk, do we have any public comment on this item?
We have no comments on this item.
We do have recommended action for option number one. Commissioners, any comment, any motions?
We accept.
It's been properly moved by Commissioner Bryant for staff approval, seconded by Commissioner Richardson. Seeing no further comment. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes unanimously. Madam Attorney, Mr. Manager, do we have any other items to come before us at the public hearing?
No, Mayor.
Excellent. It's good to have a sharing of ideas. Mayor Pro Tem, start with you.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to, to point that, that a deep mention earlier about some of the things that the chief sent to us, the police chief sent to us, I don't know if he's still on the call or not, but I know that Deputy City Manager and City Manager are also in receipt of some of the things that Tallahassee Police Department is responding to, at least our leadership is responding to what they're seeing across the country. And they're looking at policies and procedures. I want to say kudos to them for some of the things that they're doing. And I don't know, Deputy City Manager, if your chief is not here, did you want to mention some of the items that they're doing to kind of keep up with what's happening across the country and, and bring it home to, to us? I believe the chief is, he's right by the home.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. As I said, the Bible is of age, he can speak for himself. I want to give him, give him the opportunity, he deserves a lot of the credit, so I'm going to have that opportunity. Okay. Chief, would you just quickly share with us, in my, my time of share, I want, want to educate our, our public, our listening public, of what you're doing.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much for that, ma'am. I appreciate the opportunity and to do this. So I'll get right into it. Obviously, one of the biggest things we're doing is, is within the next day, probably we will have it done. But our, all of our policies will be out and facing. I mean, anybody will be on going on our website and click on any one of our policies and read them for themselves. They don't have to request them, they don't, you know, they've always been public, but they will have the option now to just click on a button on our main page and then see any of our policies and read them initially. One of the things that's come up, chokeholds, we banned that over five years ago. And so I just wanted to, you know, that, that's covered in. We, I suspended, very far due, the thigh lock. We, um, I suspended, very far due, the, the thigh lock, um, which was, was taught here in the police department. We suspended that immediately. Um, our de-escalation is throughout, um, our, our policy, but we've enhanced that language as well. Um, we've entered specific language in our policy for a duty to intervene. And that was implied in our policy through officer conduct. But we put specific language in, uh, mandating that, that officers had a duty to intervene anytime they see a violation of law or anticipate a violation of law. And so we just put that in as well. Um, we have specific policy, you know, on, um, on body worn cameras and the retention, uh, of that, um, recording. Um, if we address the, the shooting, um, or, uh, and moving vehicles, um, and that is something that is ongoing, that discussion, um, because there is great discussion across the country on, on that, how that wording, um, should actually go. When you speak, and I don't want to spend too much time on stuff, you just cut me off if you need to, but, um, you know, in the, in the banning of that, um, you basically put an officer in a quandary that if somebody is driving through a crowd, um, and, and maybe, let's say, worst case scenario, shooting at the same time. Um, and the only way you can stop that vehicle is for an officer to stand in there to, to stop that threat with a firearm, um, by banning it completely and not allowing any leeway at all. You, you put that officer in immediate violation of policy. Um, so most national policies, and I have some here from, um, one, this is accompanied by about fifteen different agencies, including Noble and ICP and others, um, which states basically the very limited scope of that. So we are looking at that and that language is likely to be enhanced, um, as well.
Okay.
As, as far as our, um, uh, training, you know, we, we already do the fair and impartial police scene. We include that, and we have them coming back, um, from an outside agency coming back to teach fair and impartial, um, as well as implicit bias and de-escalation training. So they will do that, um, for our entire agency. Um, we do use the force. Um, we make sure that that is comprehensive. Our report writing is mandatory. Uh, de-escalation is involved in everything that we do, as well as included in all of our scenario-based training. Um, so that is taught and then precipitated through the scenario-based training as well. Um, verbal de-escalation we teach. Um, and then some of the things we're looking at moving forward, um, you know, we have the signal sidearm, which is the feature where when an officer draws their weapon, their camera is automatically turned on, um, or starts recording. I should be very clear in that. Um, but we're also purchasing, um, the vehicle signal, um, the signal vehicle, which means when an officer runs lights and sirens, um, when they remove their shotgun or the rifle from the rack, that will also activate the camera, uh, to record. So again, just another way that we are trying to move this agency forward in transparency, um, and, and capturing everything that we possibly can. Um, we obviously created the internal, external branch, um, which deals with our communication and our citizen action, our Assistant Advisory Council, our Juvenile Advisory Council, as well as our Officer Wellness, um, programs. Uh, and, uh, I, I, you know.
That's a good, that's a good, that's a good helping list. Thank you. Thank, thank you, Chief. That's a, that's a good helping list, and I know that, uh, we'll be seeing more of that. Um, I think that, uh, I've said to the City Manager that when I get, um, get to get a copy, I'm gonna, uh, post it on Facebook from my page, so, uh, so the folks can actually see it.
Yes, sir. Can I add one more thing?
Sure.
One of the really important things that I think, uh, and, and the City Manager may have been about to jump in on that too, um, is, is reporting on our officers and how they, um, the, the business that they do. We have the best officers in the country. I doubt that. I have no worry at all with putting what our officers do out there. Um, some people across the country are calling it a, a report card, um, but an annual report of what our officers do. Um, we already do that. Um, we already do that through our complaints and IAs, but we're more than well, we're going to develop that even more, um, and, and put that out as well. So that was another thing, uh, important one. I just wanted to make sure we touched on.
Okay. Hey, thank you, Chief, for sharing that. And, uh, my final thing is, um, we've been approached about putting some signage downtown, uh, that says Black Lives, Black Lives Matter. And, uh, we've been talking about different ways and places to, to get that done. So I know that I've been working with, um, the City Manager and, uh, Communications and Deputy Chief, uh, Deputy City Manager, uh, on places that we can, we can do that. I think that it's, it's more than just seeing it, and it's more than signage. It's a way of life. And, uh, we need to make sure that people know that, um, that this is our new normal, that Black Lives always matter, but now they matter across the country. And we are also a part of that, making sure that we know that, uh, we send a message that we're on board with that. Black Lives Have Matter, uh, the four hundred years that we've been here. But we finally, after four hundred and one years, we finally got people saying it in lots of languages now, that Black Lives matter. And so the City of Tallahassee, I know we stand with that, and we're gonna have some signage up somewhere downtown and around town to let folks know that we're on board. Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I've got a couple of issues that follow up on the Mayor Pro Tem.
Please.
The, the first, and Mayor Pro Tem, you might have been alluding to this, uh, we got a letter from, um, uh, on her name, from the Refuge House.
Meg Baldwin.
Meg, yes. And they have partnered with the Anderson Brickler Gallery, and they're proposing a mobile mural design with the Black Lives Matters, uh, lettering. Uh, so that might be one thing we might want to consider. Uh, and, and we, we might want to put, uh, an RFP, if you will, uh, out on the street to see if there are other artists, uh, or others in town that might want to come up with some concepts that we use, and then we find the appropriate placement for those. But that was one that we were, that came to us unsolicited. Um, the other issue that I wanted to ask the chief about is the availability of the, I don't know if personnel records is the right term to use, but chief, I guess disciplinary record of an officer. One of the things that has been talked about, about the officer in Minneapolis was his record and the fact that, uh, you know, he was able to go from one agency to the next, and, and nobody checked his disciplinary record.
Yes, sir.
Are those records available to the public here in Tallahassee?
Yeah, yes, sir, they are. Uh, and we also have early intervention programs and alerts built into what we do currently, um, so that if somebody receives, you know, two complaints in a, in a year period or three complaints on, you know, depending what the complaints are, um, we're immediately, uh, immediately alerted, um, to that, um, so that we can look at it, we can address that, um, and we can, and see what intervention is needed early on. So we would, we would know long before the, I think the one you're referring to is like twelve or fourteen different, um, complaints. So certainly, we would certainly have already addressed that long before it gets to that, that point.
Okay. And, and Chief, I want to thank you all for the proactive way that you have approached this. And I think it's incumbent upon us who have this information, when we have the opportunity to share it with the public, that we do that. And we be forthright with them that our department is not what we're seeing nationally with a total disregard, where there are some officers with a total disregard for human life. But, but we are proactively even addressing the issues that have been made, uh, uh, been voiced uh, by protests throughout this nation. And I think we're ahead of the curve in that regard. And so I want to thank you all for that. I, I, I know you didn't talk about community policing today, but certainly that's one of the things I think where we're at the forefront. Uh, I mentioned earlier how that initiative caused, caused the de-escalation of any potential, uh, violent activity, uh, in the Holton Street apartment because our officers had that relationship with the residents in that neighborhood. And so we will, I'm sure, continue that and redouble our efforts in that respect as well. So thank you all, you and your leadership team, for what you're doing in that respect.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. That's it for me.
Thank you. Uh, Chief, I also want to say thank you to you and your, uh, senior staff and all members of the police department. Uh, it is apparent that you are listening to some of the concerns in the community, uh, and you are responding in rapid fashion with, uh, with, uh, some great, um, um, proposals and, uh, reform. And we certainly do appreciate it. Uh, I do have to admit as well that, uh, it does look like that the police department fully supports Whataburger. Uh, but the number of Whataburgers. Hope you enjoyed your burger. But on a, on a serious note, yeah, these are trying times in our community and, uh, and the department is stepping up to the plate. And we do appreciate it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, has Whataburger started selling doughnut sauce?
Commissioner Richardson went there. Oh my, oh my goodness. I, I do enjoy some, uh, some, some good Whataburger every now and then as well, too. Commissioner Bryant, uh, uh, sharing of ideas?
Yes, sir. Long as I was going to start out where, uh, Commissioner Williams talks did, I had my letter sitting right up here from, from, uh, our chief, and I, I'll go ahead and, and actually say to him how much we appreciate, I appreciate the forward thinking and action, because I'm, I'm definitely aligned with getting things written and accounted for and getting it done. Um, I also would like to ask you to add to your list, if it's not already on there, um, a sit-down with, um, FBLA to relook at the curriculum for basic training. Uh, I noticed when I went online that, that there are only forty hours designated for sensitivity training. Uh, and I hope I wasn't looking at anything that was out of date, but I think it bears a review. Uh, I don't know when it was reviewed before, but it, it at least is something to bring up because, um, what we did even last year, we need to continue to review and update. Uh, the second thing is we had a proposal that was brought to us, I don't know how, maybe last year, about, um, having, um, in the neighborhoods, uh, I don't know if it's called in-residence officers, but a way to encourage and incentivize people who leave a community to come back to that community as an officer. I think that's something we need to keep on the front burner, uh, because recruitment, as, as you well know, is not as easy as it is. So I think that's something we need to go ahead and continue to look into. The other thing is increase collaboration, uh, with our partners, uh, whether it's, uh, healthcare facilities, mental health facilities, uh, neighborhood facilities. Uh, police can't do everything, but we do have people in our community where that's their very, uh, charge. So the question becomes, how do we collaborate with them in order to ensure that not only police work is done, but that we pay attention to other factors that are influencing people's behavior? Uh, the last thing I'll say is, and I'm not giving you a chance to respond, Chief, but I just, I just want to put it on the forefront, is that we do need to look at all this opportunity to, um, put up a banner or do something for Black Lives Matter, because they do matter. And they, as, as has been said, they always have mattered. Uh, but right now, we need really, uh, everyone to know that we acknowledge that in the City of Tallahassee. And that is one of the few things that we know will make us Tallahassee proud. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Matlow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, yeah, I just want to, um, thank you for, uh, the update, uh, that was sent over yesterday. Uh, Chief Rebel, I, I, I think you, you took some swift action on some things that I think are, are necessary, um, that bring us in, um, a positive direction, uh, from techniques to, um, putting out records that people can see that were public, um, and transparent. Um, I like the direction of increased usage of, of body cameras. I mean, as, as we all know, we spend a lot of money on body cameras, um, and, and we want to make sure we capture the things when they're needed the most. It's not, um, every day. So we appreciate that. Um, a couple, um, items that I wanted to invite, uh, Mayor Daly and Commissioner Richardson tomorrow morning, um, on the steps of the Capitol, Kingsman's Club is doing a prayer vigil. It's a fathers and sons thing. Um, you're welcome to come, um, if you'd like to attend. Um, and then secondly, on, um, Friday morning at the Enrichment Center, uh, Commissioner Crocker and I are hosting a listening session. Um, it won't be, we won't be speaking, so there'll be no, um, communication on any type of action. It's just open listening to ideas from the public on, um, how we can move forward and how we can find, um, some positive change. And, and lastly, um, I just wanted to take a moment, um, for the public and, and, and recognize, um, that these last few months have brought a lot of trauma. Um, we, we've seen, um, from, um, some of the recent murders, um, Malik Jackson and Tony McGade, um, the recent protester, um, Twin Salow and Ms. Sims. We, we recognize, um, there's a lot going on and it's coming at us, um, really fast. And, um, sometimes we don't have all the answers right away. Um, but, but we're looking to make sure, um, we do, and everything will be, um, examined properly. And, um, if there are ways that we can improve what we do going forward, however we can, um, not just in TPD, but just as a community, how we can, um, limit these things and provide better services. We're all ears and, and we want to work, um, together to see, um, how, how can we prevent some of these traumatic situations that are happening in our community? But thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I have, um, two items to bring forward. First of all, to comment further on what Mayor Pro Tem brought up, I too received a letter from Meg Baldwin, and I have also been approached by the faith-based community. We've all been approached in some form or fashion in regards to, uh, a Black Lives Matter statement. And we've seen other communities get very creative, uh, in how they have displayed that in public property. And I am all in favor of bringing this community together and finding out a very creative way that we too, um, can express that Black Lives matter. And so I look forward, um, Mayor Pro Tem, to any and all, uh, proposals that we can entertain and move forward with. I think it's a great idea. Thank you for bringing that up. Finally, um, there is a, there is, um, um, a project underfoot in Tallahassee, the Community Remembrance Project. And this is one that is near and dear to my heart. Um, I, my family's been involved with it for quite some time. I know that many of you are familiar with the Community Remembrance Project. Uh, they are making the rounds and talking to each and every one of us. And I, uh, made the commitment to them that I would bring it up formally tonight. I do think that it is time for the commission to have a discussion of what positive role that we can play in the Community Remembrance Project. Now's not the time to get into it, but I would love to see an agenda item come back to us at the July eighth meeting. Uh, I would like the city manager to also comment, maybe provide a few remarks on what the Community Remembrance Project is, but also, you know, your thoughts on who from our team should be involved moving forward to bring it, bring it to the commission for a formal discussion. Mr. City Manager, will you real quickly, um, uh, provide some comments?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, and, um, Director Ashley Edwards is with us, and.
Oh, great.
She's much more steeped in the matter. Um, I'd like her to kind of talk about the background of discussion, and I think there's an excellent opportunity. So i- if you don't mind, if I go to the end and we'll work back to the beginning. Um, as you know, um, uh, the city brought in the, uh, Riley House into, um, our operation this year. And with that, we have an excellent resource, a Ms., Ms., um, Alzamie Barnes. She's a local trusted historian, really beyond Tallahassee, but one, a resource that we have available to us. Uh, and I know that she has been involved in these discussions, and, uh, I'd like to make sure she stays involved. I think we have an opportunity here, uh, and, and she works in our Parks and Recreation Department. Um, Ashley and I talked about this earlier today because we too have been contacted. There's, you know, kind of renewed energy about this. And, and Ashley, would you mind just giving us a little background? You've been much more involved than I have, but I think we've got a, probably a really good opportunity, given the timing of events this year, what's happening today, but also with, uh, the, the Riley House and Ms. Barnes being part of our organization.
Certainly. Um, we, we were first contacted by the, the group working on the Remembrance Project a couple of years ago. And at that time, um, we worked through our Smokey Hollow working group that was a part of the, uh, Cascades Park Project. They've been a go-to group with us, and obviously Ms. Barnes is an integral part of that group. Um, and we, we worked with them to, uh, talk about the possibilities and, and what their thoughts would be about the request that was made to locate, uh, a, a marker, a historic marker, as well as a, a replica monument, um, uh, that would be, uh, part of the, um, national, uh, there's a national museum, uh, that has a remembrance monument for every county, uh, in the country that where lynchings occurred, that, that museum's located in Alabama. And they've made available a replica monument that each community can bring back and display somewhere. And the request from the group was to. And the request from the group was to, uh, have the historic marker in the monument, uh, located, uh, kind of near and adjacent to Cascades Park, near where the North American Properties Project is going on right now. And, um, the, the group first had contemplated, uh, the idea of whether, uh, the concept should be included in the park originally when the first park design was done. And at the time, the Smoky Hollow Working Group had decided against including that, uh, as part of the historical, uh, representations that were in the park. Uh, when the group approached us a couple of years ago, we reconvened a larger group that was part of, part of the Smoky Hollow Group, uh, part some other community leaders and included folks like, uh, Alzamie Barnes, John Lawrence, Delmas Barber, Dr. Henry Lewis and Maisha, Maisha Mitchell, among others, um, that met with a, a large group from the Remembrance Project. And we had conversations and discussions about their request. And it was clear from those conversations that there was still, uh, more work that needed to be done, more conversation that needed to be had, uh, before there, there was going to be support to, for the request to be placed, for that placement to occur right there in the park. Uh, we've offered again and are happy to continue to facilitate those conversations, uh, with that group, um, and any others that are interested in being involved. Uh, we know that Miss Barnes has got some, uh, questions and concerns, uh, as do others in the group about where would the best place be for this, um, marker and monument? And, uh, and again, think that there's opportunities for all of us to work together to, to figure out what would be the best, uh, way to do this for the community. So we're happy to participate and help in any way that we can moving forward with that.
Excellent. I guess my idea is, is that, um, and, and you are correct on the historical perspective on this conversation. And yes, the Community Remembrance Project comes out of the Equal Justice Initiative out of Montgomery, Alabama. And it is a nationwide movement. Um, and it's, it's really cool. And it's really brought many people from all different walks of life in this community together specifically for it. Um, I do understand that a lot of the concerns, uh, and questions have been addressed. They have been moving forward, uh, very proactively. And, um, the request is it's time for the City Commission to formally get involved. And that's why I'm bringing this item before the City Commission. And again, um, yes, all the people that you mentioned, Ashley, should be involved in helping bring together whatever it is that will be on the agenda. But I really would love to see this, uh, on our agenda for July 8th. Now, Mr. Manager, I'm assuming that you want a motion for that. And I would ask the Mayor Pro Tim, um, to, to make that motion for me so that I could, uh, second it.
Some more.
And I will second that. So any other discussion on the Community Remembrance Project? Remember, we're not making any decisions tonight. This is just to bring it back so we can have a full briefing on the project and, and what it is and, um, and, and how we could positively get involved.
One, one of the things, Mayor, that, um, um, because I've had some conversation as well, is, um, determining several locations that it could be and not just settle on one location, um, and find the most appropriate place for it to be. Because, uh, there's some of the concern that I've heard is that there are a lot of atrocious things that happen in Tallahassee. And so this one, this is just one of many. And so, um, are we going to do any others? And, uh, if this is going to be the only one, then it needs to be in an appropriate place. Um, you know, a place that, that will, will highlight it, but will also not take away from anything else that's occurring as well. So location, location, location.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Mayor?
Yes, sir. Commissioner Richardson?
Uh, uh, the Mayor Pro Tim must have been reading my mind on this.
I'm reading your notes.
My, my question was, you know, right near the old jail is that old live oak tree that they, and, and I'm not making light of it because it's a serious issue, was called the hanging tree. Wouldn't it be, that be an appropriate location for a marker of that type? I, I'm just putting it out there. I'm not saying it, but, but when you look at that location, it's, it's just consistent with, you know, what happened here in Tallahassee at that location. So I just put it out there for consideration.
That's a good point. Um, you know, not, not to get into too much discussion now. I don't know if historically they were, they, they have been able to prove, um, um, for lack of a better phrase, whether that was the tree or not. However, it was the site of the old jail. And in fact, if you remember, a couple of months ago, um, there was a soil collection ceremony through the Equal Justice Initiative, a matter of fact, that did take place. And actually, the developers of the, um, the, the hotel down there are extremely supportive of the Community Remembrance Project. I know that is one of the sites that is being discussed. Regardless, I think that most of the sites that are going to be discussed obviously will be on public land. Therefore, it is appropriate for us to have a more formal role from this point forward, hence bringing it back. But, but, but I agree. I, I agree with you, Commissioner Richardson. I do, I do.
Okay.
There is a motion and a second on the table. Any further comment? Seeing none? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Excellent. Uh, I do not think we have anything else to come before the City Commission. I think it was mentioned earlier that, uh, this could very possibly, and hopefully, will be our last City Commission meeting. Uh, knock on wood, if, uh, everything keeps going, um, um, in our favor, that we will have to do, uh, totally virtually. I do ask everybody in the public to work with us, that at our next meeting, July 8th, if we are meeting in public, obviously, we will still have the social distancing guidelines in place. Um, it's going to be interesting working out how we get people in and out to testify. And it might take a little longer than normal, but I know that this community will be excited that we are back in, um, um, in chambers and, uh, will work with us on making sure that we can accommodate public health, but also make sure that everyone that wants to participate can participate. I hope everybody has a wonderful evening. And without anything else, this meeting is adjourned.